We're going to be doing the study session today on our future charter commission. Uh, Councilwoman?
Yes.
Just bear with us for a second.
Yes.
As a matter of fact, since we have our honorable councilwoman Nancy Barsh, she's going to lead us on the pledge of allegiance.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madam, uh, thank you, Councilwoman Breyer.
Thank you.
Here he is. We've got our honorable councilman, Uncle Bob Constant. So I'm just going to ask that everybody just hold their questions until Roger can give us, uh, you know, all the information. Nobody will interrupt. Roger, the purpose of this study session today was that this body has, wants to put forward a commission similar to kind of what other municipalities have done. I know Dearborn just went through their charter commission and the body is nine people. Uh, they would be elected officials. We are trying to do a couple of things here. Uh, get this to be on the ballot, on the November ballot, so that the residents can choose their nine commissioners. These commissioners will be paid. Uh, these commissioners will be part-time and these commissioners will be in charge of what happens to this new, um, uh, you know, this new commission and what happens with our city charter. Ultimately, if a council member wants to run, I mean, I would assume that they would have to give up their city council seat in order to be a part of the commission. Uh, but just kind of go into a little bit of detail. I know Rachel LaPointe had given us some information on this today. She actually gave us a lot. Uh, so if Rachel LaPointe is on there, which I see she is, thank you, Rachel, for that. Um, then I will hand this mic over to our corporation counsel who represents the entire city of Dearborn Heights, including the city council. Roger Farina, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, sir, council chair. Um, in light of what you said, and I thank you, Rachel. We, we had looked at, actually, David Della, previous council chair, and I had looked at, um, uh, the issue of an amendment to the charter. So we stood on a fact sheet on how to amend our charter. When we were looking at the procurement issues, um, we actually went through thoroughly. We talked with the Attorney General's office and, um, there's a division that works with this area. I sent you an email today on those issues. Um, so I'm going to run through basically what it takes, but, um, uh, the revision of the city charter may be initiated by a resolution adopted by three-fifths of the legislature or by petition signed by at least five percent of the registered voters unless the present charter provides otherwise. I didn't see anything that says another way we can do this other than this procedure. Um, in any case, the decision to revise is for the electors to approve or reject. And the question's going to be, the first question is, do you support a charter revision? Now, I was emailing the clerk because with that question, the voters have to have in front of them, the question is, do we want at that time also to pick the nine commissioners? We, because if we do two separate elections, the question is, do we have to have a primary before we do it?
Well, I believe, uh, the way Dearborn did it was they added on the ballot, do you want, do you want to see a charter revision?
Yeah.
Eighty-five percent of the voters voted yes on it.
Right.
And then, then it was just for the general and there's going to be a general election now because school board, for the Crystal School Board has one in November, so is there a presidential?
Yeah.
Yeah. And so, I mean, we already have it. Now it's just petitioning it to get on to the ballot.
Okay. But do we want to wait till November to do that? Do we want to do it before November?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we want to do it. No, no, no. You want to add, you don't want to do a special election. It would cost the city seventy-five thousand dollars or something.
Not a special, a primary, primary.
Along with a primary.
Because the Crestwood election would be on in Crestwood.
Well, I mean, you, you would get a lot more voters in the general than you would in the primary.
Then you'd have to wait another whole period.
To choose the nine?
Yeah.
Well, you can't, I mean, if you did the primary and you voted, yes, I want to see it on there, you're not going to have nine prepared to be ready for November. You're still going to have to wait until the following 2025 year election.
I don't know what the process is for the charter amendment or review or commission. That's a legal issue. So that's, I think, what our corporation counsel is, is looking into.
What I'm saying is, I think the councilman here, and if I may, Roger.
Sure.
The councilman is saying, if we have a, if we add it to the primary election and it passes, you're not going to be able to prepare.
Oh, the timeline.
The timeline for the two months for commissioners to go out, lobby, you know.
That's what this, that's what this.
Well, maybe just do it right away. You start right now.
Right. May, we can have a special election though. And then in November.
That would cost, that would cost the city.
We have another election. But then, no, we're going to wait until next year.
It's too late, I believe, for the May election.
Maybe we can do it at the same time. If you do the primary to put the question on the ballot, you also put the commissioners at the same time. So you don't do two elections.
I'm going to, I'm going to explain to you there. Let's just say you do. This is an elected official position, right? These commissioners are going to be considered elected officials. These people are going to canvass, they're going to raise money, they're going to postcards, they're going to do the work. And if the voters vote no, then they just, you guys just defeated the, what was the point of doing all that work?
Well, the question is, do we need, and you look at, look at a charter revision, is there stuff left out, omitted from the charter that we need?
I think ultimately the, the.
More than finished.
I'm sorry.
The three questions are, are there, um, issues omitted from the charter that the charter needs to include? Are there corrections in the charter that we have to, or is there anything that's out of, out of time, is outdated in the charter? And, and that's why we're asking for charter revision because we, we think there are, but we want the voters to make that decision.
I, I.
But if they campaign from now, if they campaign from now and do it in August, they have that time to campaign, yes, they're going to have to put their names and incur money. But if we wait till, um, between, uh, August 8th and November, is that enough time to give people to campaign?
No.
To have it on the, them on the ballot as well as the, um, as the special.
I don't even think you could add the names to it. You would have to add the names in April to be on the November ballot, correct?
That's why the date, I'd have to look at the dates.
Yeah. Well, I'm, I'm just thinking like.
From when you were on.
Yeah, like, I'm just trying to think, like, let's just say you put the ballot, hey, would you like to have a charter, you know, uh, commission or to revive this charter? And the majority of everybody says no. I'm just hypothetically speaking. Well, then.
Then the commission dissolves.
Then the, then there's no commission. But now if it says yes, the deadline technically to put to, the filing deadline to be on a ballot for, for August and November will be in April.
Which is now.
Which is.
Pretty much.
Basically. What I ultimately think, and I'm just, I'm just thinking, not that I had four elections before, right? Um, but, but, yeah, I went through two primaries, two generals, three generals. Um, my, my, my thing is, you leave it in the general, you, you keep it till November, you're giving the residents, you're able to inform the residents a lot more from now until November, that there's going to be a charter review. It's on the residence if you guys would like one. If the majority of the city votes yes, come springtime, come April of 2025, you add, you give enough time for residents to be able to come out and say, I want to be a part of this charter commission. Thirty people might apply for this. And it's also going to be a reelection year for some council members who might say, I don't want to run for council, I want to run for the charter commission. You know, with my experience and my background, so now, I know it may seem like it's a lot further, but it's the right way to do it in my personal opinion. Um, you know, you're, you're not enforcing somebody will add them both together and if it passes, great, and if it doesn't, well, I just think it's sloppy.
Okay.
Councilwoman?
Might I ask Lynn a question? Wouldn't, what elections do we have in spring next year? What is our first election?
None in spring.
None?
Next year would be a local year, so it'd be August and November. I mean, if we need.
So there is no April or February or April? Because that would have made sense to do it then.
There's, May is a special election if somebody should call and want to pay that extra money for a special election. Whether or not this qualifies, I don't know offhand.
I think our former corporation counsel told us it would cost seventy-five thousand dollars to the taxpayers.
Because you have the whole city, yes.
Yeah, so. Go ahead, councilman.
So I got a few questions for corporation counsel. Number one, is there any corrections or any adjustment to the charter? That would be the commission that would make such decisions, correct?
Yeah, the process, once you like the nine and you start the process, it's about an eighteen-month process.
No, no, correct.
So what they're going to do is you're going to break down each chapter of the charter within that group is going to take a charter, then they're going to put it together and then look at it and then, then it goes to the governor once we approve it here and stuff for them to look at the revisions and the changes.
Got you. So my other question is to Madam Clerk, um, if we do have a special election for this so we can get, um, the commissioners on this year's ballot, it would be in May, correct? And we can do it in May, right?
Twenty-five.
Next May?
This May.
No.
No, not this.
No?
That's way too short of an order.
Too soon.
Too soon.
Because from what I understand, you want the ballot wording on it first, whether or not you want to have it, a commission. Is that right, corporation?
I wish I had like a white.
Do you support, do you support a charter revision?
Draw it out.
That would be the ballot language and let the people vote on that, correct?
Yes or no? Yes.
Okay.
Exactly.
Right, okay. That's what I'm understanding.
So that's what I'm trying to say, that if we did that as a special election, then you can have candidates on the ballot for November.
I didn't pull the May because I think we're already beyond that.
Yeah, ballot's already been printed, right?
I think, well, May, we don't have one right now, but I think I looked up the calendar and I think like the filing deadline for, I could be wrong, I could go run back and get it or I can look it up right here. I think it was like tomorrow. I, I, I'm really mean, and let me look and see if I.
Yeah, I, I think he's just asking the question. I don't think he's asking you to actually do it.
Okay.
It would still have to be on a council meeting and.
Because you'd have to put, right, you'd have to have the ballot language, you'd have to get it certified, you'd have, you'd have to approve it to put the ballot, um, proposal or put the proposal on the ballot. Right, council, corporation counsel.
Understood.
Yeah. Counselor?
If you wanted it.
Counselor? I'm good.
I noticed something that you wanted. Do you have any thoughts, any comments?
On, on my, on my, uh, agenda item?
No, this was you. And this was for you.
Well, no, this is something that everybody wanted. I just brought it up, but, um, I mean.
There's two resolutions.
The earliest we could vote it, if we could wait till November, the earliest we could do it is if there was a special election in May. You could call a special election anytime, can't you? Special election?
No, it's May, it's usually May.
It's usually May, so that'd be the.
I'd also just push it to, that costs the taxpayers and just follow the August and November.
August, so a year from this August would be the.
There'd be a primary if there's more than nine. And if there isn't nine, if there's only nine, you would just go, or if you had like, I think, I'm sorry, if you had.
More than eighteen.
If you had eighteen, you would only have a general.
Well, that's, that's pretty close to two years from now.
A year, a year and a half.
Well, uh, this past November, it'd been two years.
Yeah, but this November, you need to have, still have.
Yeah.
A, a language to be on the ballot.
Right. Then we have to wait till next August to vote on it.
Correct.
So it'd be a year, a good year and a half.
And then another.
Well, you could vote on it this November to, to put the language on the ballot. If that passes.
Yeah, I understand that.
The following year, you would have a bunch of people running for that commission.
That makes sense.
Look, and I think in when, I believe when Dearborn did it, I'm so sorry, just give me one second, when Dearborn did it, uh, and maybe Sue, our reporter here, would know from the Press and Guide or, uh, the Time Herald. Yep. But at the time you were with the Press and Guide, when I think you guys wrote about the Dearborn Charter Commission, out of nine, I think thirty-four people applied, ran. Uh, and people, it was, it was a lot of, a lot of people were running for it. Um, and, and they're almost done. I think they said that by this November, they're, they'll have a brand-new commission for, or charter for the city of Dearborn.
And council chair, Lansing is going through it now.
Yeah.
They're in the process, um, their city attorney, James Symetra, is working on it now. So we're in contact with them, make sure we streamline our process and, um, as well as with, with Dearborn. Um, but, uh, and that was recommended by the AG's office. So I want to make sure we have as much eyes on this and input with all of us working together, especially with Lynn.
Council chair.
Yeah, go ahead, councilman.
I, I think that's a good, uh, timetable because next year, uh, there'll be a citywide election. Um, you know, we, we won't have to have a special election. And if we can get the threshold issue of whether, uh, the people want the charter revised as opposed to a whole new charter, new form of government, for example, or something, um, uh, and get that passed, then we can get the ball rolling.
Council chair?
Go ahead, I'm going to have Councilman Wenzel and then Councilwoman Breyer next.
Thanks, thank you. I, I recommend that we put it on the primary just to get it over as fast as possible and let things happen. Put it on the primary.
I would, I would do that, but you know what the issue is? I want to ensure that there's enough voters to come out and actually vote on it. Because if you have, it's so statistically showing, if you have, I think it's a presidential election, council, Madam Clerk, you're going to see here anywhere between seventeen to eighteen thousand people voting, correct?
I can tell you, in 2020, we sent out sixteen thousand absentee ballots.
Correct. And the primary.
So that's just absentee.
Yeah, and the primary, you probably did not see as much, nowhere near. I, I would just give, I just want the residents to be able to all who are voting to be able to take part in it. The primary, not that many people are going to do it because the presidential primary is right now for us in Michigan, right? It's in March or in February?
I'm sorry.
For the presidential primary.
February twenty-seventh, that's why you don't have.
February twenty-seventh, so. I would like to see it on the November ballot, that way everybody can vote on it.
All right, I agree.
That was my suggestion also. November, we, we asked the people, do they want it? And then following May, special or the first election, then we have the people who've had time to decide if they want to apply.
I also just, I like that idea as well, councilwoman. I just want to say, to, to have a special election in May is pointless. You're going to have an election in August. Why are we going to charge the taxpayers seventy-five thousand dollars to have a special election in May when all we have to do is wait until August or November for them to make the decision on this commission? So, and then if you did, and if there was more than eighteen people that applied, you're going to have to have two special elections because you need to have a primary and a general. We'll just piggyback off of the normal August and November election. Roger, I think, uh, this body, for the most part.
I'll coordinate with, with our clerk.
Now, I want you to know, former councilman Abdouhak, I think twice, put this motion to put it on the ballot.
We have two resolutions, you have two resolutions in front of you.
I believe on December twelfth and September sixteenth. Actually, I'm sorry, Councilwoman, uh, Manalowski Maxwell actually put it on.
Yeah.
On September sixteenth of 2021.
Correct.
And then Councilman Abdouhak did his on December eighteenth of 2023. So.
I thought, excuse me, council, I thought he, he did it a year or two years before all.
That was the councilwoman, Manalowski Maxwell.
Okay.
So I know Tom, Councilman Wenzel, has been asking for this. I mean, it seems like the direction from this body is it's a full, it's a democracy here. And they would like to see, uh, this commission, this commission to be established and, uh, start a new, have a new charter for the city of Dearborn Heights. I mean, God bless, uh, Councilman Constance's father, who was one of the commissioners that wrote this charter that we currently stand. Um, so maybe you can get the language, prepare that for us.
Yes.
Uh, you know, I, I don't want us to sleep on this. I, I really want this, you know, move forward. It's got to be on the ballot for November. I'm sure Councilman, uh, Wenzel's going to keep asking every meeting until we got some type of language. So can you give us maybe a timeline, how long you think you need on this?
Yeah, I, I would, I would like to sit with Councilman Constance and Wenzel and we can put a timeline together. Um, I would, I'd like to have something within, uh, we're just getting to ballot language. So within thirty days, we can have that looked at and put together.
Okay, Madam Clerk, can you give us a follow-up this week on letting us know the deadline to be able to get it on the November ballot?
Yeah, I'm looking at it.
Okay, and then can you share that with all of us, including Roger?
Absolutely. And that's the ballot language in order to.
Right. And then. I think we have to send it to the AG's office, get it approved and everything.
Yes, yes, you do. I, I know we had this discussion, uh, back in September when the councilwoman brought it up. And I, I believe I have notes on my, uh, I'm going to see if I can pull up those notes, but I know about the special meeting was, it was seventy-five thousand dollars according to our former corporation counsel. It was going to cost the city seventy-five thousand dollars to do a special election. I, I'm not for charging our residents seventy-five thousand dollars.
Most of them.
Just for a special election. That could potentially not even happen. Any other questions?
One more.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, are we, is this committee going to consist of seven registered voters?
Nine.
Nine.
Because what we've got here in twenty-three says seven.
It was a mistake. So state law is nine.
I don't think they have to be registered voters either.
They do.
They do have to be registered? I thought they had voting age.
No.
They have to be registered voters?
Yeah. You shouldn't be running for office if you're not a registered voter.
That's right.
That's true. And originally, I thought there was a council member or someone on this group as well.
No.
And that was to, to draft. We had talked about myself, Margie, and Janet Badalow drafting, making the charter gender neutral, updating everything regarding the municipal courts and constables and all that, because we have a district court now. And, um, uh, there was a third issue and coming up with language and putting it on the ballot, similar to when they took the libraries out of the recreation commission. It wasn't done by a, uh, elected commission. It was, there was ballot language arrived at and then everyone voted on it.
We did.
And the, the, taking the libraries out of the recreation department failed the first time. So I think having a commission is a better way to go, an independent way to go.
Okay, council chair. I'm going to let, I'm going to let Roger go first, Councilman South and then Councilman Wenzel.
I'll give my time to Councilman Wenzel.
Okay, well, let's go with Roger first. Go ahead, Roger.
Yeah, I think some of the considerations, just for the record, that we're looking at is, is, is the charter organized in a logical sequence? Does it define key terms? Is the language clear and understandable? Are provisions easy to locate when needed? Does it have an index? Um, is it preceded by a meaningful preamble and historic statement as Bob was, um, Councilman Constance?
Roger, I will, I'd like to answer that. You may feel that way. I may feel that way. Somebody else may not feel that way. And the beautiful thing about this country is, somebody doesn't feel that way, somebody does. But the voters decide.
Exactly.
You know?
Yeah, I'm just saying what we're looking at.
Yeah, yeah, so, I mean, look, this thing's been around since nineteen sixty-three. We're in twenty twenty-four. It's been decades and decades and light years before we've had a, you know, this is the first of its kind and you're going to take part in, in this and we're creating history together here today, Roger.
Thank you, sir.
So, so I don't think this is ultimately about, you know, does this sit, doesn't fit? Who knows? People might come out in storm and say, no, this charter's fine. I mean, I'm going to disagree with them. I'm definitely going to lobby that we do need a new charter, uh, uh, revision. So.
I think those considerations also are very important. So it's, it's clear and up to date.
Yeah.
Council chair.
Are you going to let Tom go or are you going to?
Sure.
I was just going to say, you know, I've said it dozens of times that, you know, time is of the essence because, you know, weeks count and now the earliest we can even get a charter revision would be sometime probably late twenty twenty-six. The way these, this timeline's going right now.
So twenty twenty-five, well, twenty twenty-four, it would be either it's going to pass or not. And then by November of twenty twenty-five, you will have them on the ballot. They would start January first of twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, so some.
I mean, look, I didn't, I wasn't the one to drop the ball here. I'm, I'm just new. I'm the new council chair right here.
I'm just saying, you know, because you can't beat around the bush anymore because this should have been done, you know, because we all, we all.
But we're here now.
It's been always, it's been on, on top, on topics for, you know, years.
Yeah.
And we could have had a, closely being finished right now if we would have been on the ball, so now we got to.
We should have had, we should have had commissions running for this November ballot is what should have happened.
Couple of years ago.
If it was September of twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, it really should have started in, right now. You should be, by this November, you should have been able to choose who your commissioner was going to be.
We should have had it done by twenty twenty-one, that was three years ago.
And then we're not going to point the finger here, we're just going to say God had different plans. We're, but we know we're going to hold accountability now.
Maybe we'll get some better people than we would had before.
There you go. Maybe brought different people. Angela will probably get ready for retirement.
Dad's going to be ninety-eight Friday, so.
Happy birthday to Uncle Bob's father. If you guys don't know the history, uh, for those at home that are watching, our honorable councilman, Robert Constant, attorney, his father actually was one of the commissioners that wrote the Dearborn Heights Charter back in nineteen sixty-three. His birthday is going to be, uh, Saturday, he'll be turning ninety-eight.
It was, it was Richard Young, William Dunn, who became the chief circuit court judge, um, John Harris.
Was he also a lawyer? Seems like a lot of lawyers.
Two lawyers, my dad and another lawyer, and that was it.
Richard Young sounds like our senior center name.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
That was a joke.
He and my dad were law partners for a little while, way back.
And Abraham Lincoln.
Yeah, Abraham Lincoln. Rumor has George Washington was pulling up on his horse while we were riding it. The moral of the story is here, Roger, you could see, we've been waiting a long time for this. Uh, I think I agree with the Councilman Wenzel, not to say you or anybody here, but we've, uh, we've definitely dropped the ball on this, something we want to see expedited.[1486.52] Uh, I know you said potentially thirty days, that would be March sixth, my birthday's the seventh, I'm bearing gifts on that day.
Council Chair.
Go ahead, Councilman.
So again, my question is for both Council, so any changes or, or anything we'd have, anything to pull? I truly believe we would be up to the commissioners that are elected to change the charter. Like, we shouldn't, we shouldn't restrict or put anything such an index, or any kind of requirements or guidelines on it, because that's the whole purpose of it being a.
Well, no, if there's a commission, no, not the council or the administration can make any decisions.
Uh, Councilman Constance, and they said, well, you know, they wanted to do so-and-so, and that should not, that shouldn't have nothing to do with us as elected officials, that should be for the commission to decide, and the people we elect.
Your mic, Mike.
It was the question of, why do we need to revise the charter?
It's just, right, it's just outdated.
Well, some people might say, no, we don't want to change it, right.
That's, that's, that's.
But what you're saying is, these are the issues, considerations, what we're looking at, why we need to change. But we can't tell you what to vote, you make the decision and you vote for it.
So, I believe that our charter is so outdated, there should be, there should, just, we need to bring it up to today's, today's speed, and, I mean, we might agree on something, the residents might completely disagree with us, so that's why we leave that to the voters.
The good news is, I think we're all, uh, we're all seeing this together, I think we all want to get this done. Um, let us, uh, this was a great, pretty quick meeting, five oh five.
Attorney General.
Council Chair.
Yes.
I, I want to confirm this, but I looked through the dates, and it looks like Tuesday, August thirteenth, and I will confirm it, by four o'clock, deadline for ballot wording of proposals qualified to appear on the November ballot, certified to local or county clerks. So that looks like that's, it has to be signed, sealed, and delivered to our office by four o'clock on that day.
What was that date again?
August fourteenth.
August thirteenth.
Thirteenth.
Twenty-four.
A lot of, a lot of great days.
So it's on the list that, on page seven, but the process I'm getting there, I don't know.
Okay.
All right.
Uh, I'm going to now open this up to public comment, if I have nothing else from any of the council members. I know we have Rachel Lapointe, I know we have our honorable Dearborn Heights Police Officers with us, who are standing before us. I thank the Dearborn Heights Fire Department, eh, Police Department, thank you, guys. Um, I'm going to go out with, in the audience, before I move over to Zoom, anybody? Now, all at once, please. Seeing none?
I got something. Um, this, that date was August?
Thirteenth.
What page is that on, that was on?
Seven. Yep, yep.
Page seven?
Read the same.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, can you, uh?
August thirteenth.
I'm going.
Does that, does that give us time to send this to the Attorney General? I mean, we'd have to do that before this, right?
Have to do it right away, yeah.
So this would have to be sent to the Attorney General before August thirteenth, and get their approval.
Good news is, we'll make some phone calls, I know somebody that, somebody that loves somebody.
Is that the case, so it has to be sent to the?
Yeah, and their unit has to, before August thirteenth.
The special unit that works with this, we were already in contact with them already, and we've gotten communication, so they're ready to help us. George Elworth is one of the leading, um, uh, election issues.
Who's that?
George Elworth, I sent you an email on him.
I don't know why I'm not, did I, am I not getting?
Roger, Council Chair.
Councilman, yep, you can go ahead.
Roger, if, if we were to send this to the Attorney General's office on the first of the month, say, uh, March first, um, what, what's a, what's a fair estimate of time it would take for them to approve and get it back to us? I think within, yeah, within thirty days.
Thirty days?
Two months.
It's really not under control, it's.
It's up to them, but we'll, we'll be in communication with them, they'll send any, I think it's just, we're keeping it simple. We talked about this before, when we tried to get this on the ballot last year, remember?
Two years ago, two years ago.
On this, was that last year, or two years ago? If you were doing an amendment. Remember, you said we were too late to get it on the ballot, yeah, it was, because there was a timeframe we had already set up to get it to the Attorney General, and they had X amount of weeks or something, and then, so we, we kind of had a timeframe figured out a while back, but thirty days is. Thirty days is what's mentioned here, but I, I think what we wanted, when you were talking about amendments, like the two thousand and seven amendment that went in on, on the procurement issue, nineteen point two, that took a period of time, but it was done by November of twenty, uh, two thousand and seven, uh, within the thirty days. However, we did, we didn't get it, we didn't send it to the AG's office, or the previous Corporation Council didn't send it, so it had to be corrected, and then it was sent and approved by the Office of the Great Seal, which is in charge of all the records and everything.
Hey, Roger, do you need thirty days, you can't get this done in like two weeks?
I'm going to meet Friday, I'm going to try and meet when we finish with Bob, and with, try and do it on Friday, meet on Friday.
All right, there you go, Tom, there you go.
I mean, I don't want to promise, I like to promise less and deliver more, but.
You don't want to overpromise and underdeliver, I like that. Okay, guys, Tom, anything else?
Good.
I'm going to go to Rachel Lapointe, Madam Clerk, can you, uh, does she got to state her name, her city that she resides in? Street she lives on?
Hi, guys, can you hear me? Yes. Okay, Rachel Lapointe, Merrick Street, Dearborn Heights, all that fun stuff. Um, so my only concern right now would be that if we have the yes/no question on the November ballot, would we have to have a special May election, like Lansing is having to do?
No.
Because I, I think Roger should check with the Attorney General's office on this one, because the Home Rule City Act says that if you split them, that commissioners have to be elected within sixty days, but because of Michigan election law saying elections can only be May, August, and November, they have to do it in May, even though they voted in November, yes, no. So I think that if we approve it in November, it would have to be May, based on what's happening in Lansing, but this is something definitely for Roger to talk about with Lansing and with the AG's office, to see if that would be a requirement, um, to fit all the different things.
I, I've left the message already, I'm, I'm in communication with James Smirtka, he's the city attorney for Lansing, and they're going through the process, so I'm going to hear back, this will be part of what I talk to him about, and I'm in communication with the AG's office even this afternoon, and they've sent me some updates. Um, so I will follow up with your question to them.
Yeah, because that, that's just my biggest thing, because like, I think, um, I understand, Mo, where you're coming from with not wanting to have to like, have people pour money into a campaign, and then it gets voted no on, but I think that we do need to kind of expedite this process as much as possible. So my preference would be that we did the August yes/no question, and then November have the candidates, if it's approved in August. Um, and I would hope that that would maybe be something we could have happen, but I know that with deadlines, it might not be possible.
Well, let's get, let's get the facts, let's get the facts first, and, uh, you know, the, I, I think there was a different reason, I don't know why Lansing did this in May, but that could be the reason, if that's the case, I mean, you know, that would be ultimately the majority of this council to make that vote, I mean, I would support it if it needed to be.
Yeah.
But we're not, we're not deliberating on anything right now, obviously, this is just a open, this is just a study session regarding. Uh, anything else, Rachel?
No, that was the main thing, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Rachel, anyone else on Zoom?